Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Mayor Black is absent tonight, and so I will be presiding. Will a clerk please take the roll?
Sunday. Mungard.
Yes.
Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg.
Here.
Okay, we'll begin by reciting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
Well, there is a current copy of the Open Meeting Act that's posted on the Chrysalis Events Center. Proclaimations. First item would be proclaimations, we have none. Oath of office, we have none. Presentations, we have none. Mayor made it very easy for me. I have been reminded, the next item is the administrator's report.
It was highlighted. All right, thank you. Department heads in the Finance Department have been diligently working on the 2022, 2122 budget, and within the next month or so, Mayor Black, Phil and I will start scheduling those meetings with each of you to make sure we get your input, so start thinking about what we need to make sure we include in next year's budget. Last Thursday was the final day of the 21 legislative session. Legislators are expected to return in the fall for a special session focused on redistricting. The 22 legislative session will convene on Wednesday, January 5th, 2022, and let Mayor Black and myself know if there's anything that you guys want us to start working on now in preparation for that next session. Along with the state meeting redistrict this year following the results of the 2020 census, the city will need to look at new ward districts as well. We will follow the same process we followed in the past years by contracting with MAPPA. And with the condensed timelines for the ward redistricting, we may need to have special meetings at the end of the year to get the new wards approved, and I'll keep you updated as we get closer. And then, as many of you know, the first softball games were held at the new softball complex starting tonight, which is really exciting. Stay tuned for more information on an official ribbon cutting being planned prior to the first tournament that's scheduled for June 25th to the 27th. And finally, the city's strategic plan is nearly ready for your review. Within the next few weeks, Kendra will be reaching out to you to schedule meetings so we can go through the strategic plan with you and make any changes we need. Thank you.
Okay, the next item would be the consent agenda items. Is there any requests to remove the, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mungard, if we could, I'd like to pull item C11 for some discussion.
Okay, item C11 will be removed. So now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without item C11? Councilman Mungard, I'd like to pull C5. Okay. Councilman Gaines, does your motion include the removal of C5? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Glover. I'll call for proponents. Opponents? Council discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Sunday. Mungard.
Yes.
Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight A's, zero N's.
Okay, let's go first to item C5. Let's see. That's a resolution to approve Highway 50 speed limit adjustments. Do we have a motion to approve? Second, mostly motion by Councilman Clu, second by Councilman Jaworski. Okay, proponents of C5? Resolution R21-0094. Any opponents? Council discussion? Mungard? Yes, Councilman.
I don't think I'm necessarily a proponent or an opponent at this point, I just.
Given that you just recently set forth some criteria, you'd like the council to adopt to set speed limits, I just thought perhaps we could start here and make a closer look because of what my reading of this were significantly reducing some speed limits on the Highway 50 area, is that correct? Between Capeport and Schram? Is that right, Jeff? Could you just speak to that? I'm not happy, I just wanted to have more information.
And Councilmember, if you might turn your mic back on again because it flipped itself off, thank you.
Engineer Public Works Director for the State Papillion. This is actually something that's being proposed by the Nebraska Department of Roads because Highway 50 is a state highway. It is in our city limits, so they require our authorization and approval to proceed with those reductions.
Have we spoken as to the reasons at all?
There's been significant accidents around Capeport and Schram Road that maybe Police Chief can speak to, but there's been some fatalities out there, I think a couple at least, so I think they're looking at trying to reduce those speed limits with the increase in traffic flow and development in that area.
Well, here, let me ask you a question. Has this been reviewed under our policies for setting speed limits?
It has not. Again, Department of Transportation is proposing the reductions in speed limit there due to city, which, you know, given the fact that there's been fatalities and accidents at that location, we didn't feel it was necessary.
Well, has the Department of Roads indicated any need for speed, any need for us to move along on this?
No, they have not.
So would there be any problem if we referred it to committee to apply our policy and bring it back?
There should not be, no. If that's something you'd like to do.
Well, I will make a substitute motion to do that, to refer it to the Public Safety Committee for review as to how this fits within our policy. Mr. Sunday's made a good point. If we're going to have a policy, we should apply. So I would make that motion to continue C5, this resolution, and refer it to committee for recommendation. Motion by Mungard, second by Councilmember Sunday. Call the roll.
Mr. Mungard.
Do we have somebody? Mr. Sunday? Or? Okay, who wants to talk? Mr. Stube?
Yes, so you're recommending they go back to the Public Safety Committee, and I'm not sure the policy requires it going back to the Public Safety Committee.
It did not, we set criteria that.
Correct.
We would evaluate it based on this criteria.
Correct. So essentially, it comes down to doing a speed study?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Based on the policy, it does not require going back to the Public Safety Committee. Based on policy, it's just a speed study, make determination as far as what that, what comes back from that speed study, and then it's adhered to based on that's a policy that we have.
Well, then, I will amend my motion. Thank you for that clarification. I will amend my motion just simply to continue C5 indefinitely and request staff to take the steps that are required by the policy and provide advice as to how this complies or doesn't comply with the policy that we've adopted. The motion has been seconded. Wow. Mr. Ingberg.
Just a question, just as a practical matter. We certainly have input into the result of DOR, but as a practical matter, we can recommend all we want, but if the state makes a determination to change it, that's going to overrule anything that we do, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that a record, since it's a state highway, we certainly could try to use our policy to influence their decision, but it's their decision, and whatever they decide, we're going to have to live with.
I believe you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, okay, I'll ask. I have a question about that because, as I understand, this is one of the first times that we've annexed an area next to the highway, and the Attorney General says that means we've also annexed the highway, which is different than we've done in the past. So if we've annexed the highway, how does the state have anything to say about the speed limits we put on our highway?
Well, they still maintain control of the highway, even though they put the maintenance and long-term, you know, safety measures of the highway on us.
So the Attorney General said that the expense is ours, but the control is the state?
Correct.
That's nice of him to say that.
Even though they relinquished 84 Street to us, they still have control, so to speak of 84 Street as far as sign agents and most kinds of things go, right-of-way acquisitions and those types of things.
Well, don't we set the speed limits on 84 Street in Washington?
We haven't since the relinquishment, we did practically relinquish them, so I'm not sure what we'd have to do there in order to, since Joseph we elected to do so now.
I guess I would request that you consider that question as part of your advice you give us on the policy.
Will do.
Mr. Councilman Stube?
Thank you. So with regard to costs, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, we have an agreement with the DOT related to all state highways within City Papillion jurisdiction, and there's a cost, excuse me, there's revenue comes back to the city for those minor maintenance type of activities, so it'd be filling potholes, putting up signs, things like that. Is that correct?
Not putting up signs.
Okay.
Put up the signs, but pothole repairs, remove all those types of things, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's $2,200 of land value, those local governments.
Thank you.
See no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Sunday. Mungard.
Yes.
Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Clu. Stube. Ingberg. Eight A's, zero N's.
The next item will be item C11, resolution R21-0104, resolution to approve an agreement with Bryser LLC for a fire inspection database. I would ask Fire Chief Bill Bowes to come forward, please. Well, hold it. First off, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember Jaworski, second by Councilmember Sunday. Okay.
Councilmember Mungard, or Council President Mungard, I'm sorry. The reason I asked this before, that I think you wanted to pull this well, was because we had two or three questions asked by a citizen regarding this item, and even though it's gone through committee hearings and everything, and those questions have been answered, rather than have the entire council responding, I thought it'd be more prudent, and I think Council President Mungard did as well, to have you answer the three questions they had. Just to clarify, if you don't mind, Council President Mungard, would you prefer to ask the question?
I will specifically, yes, I, thank you, Councilman. I will ask those questions that have been forwarded to me, and I'll ask that of Chief Bowes, so go ahead, introduce yourself.
Thank you, Bill Bowes, Fire Chief.
Well, okay, give us a quick synopsis of what this, what this agreement pertains does.
Okay, currently, buildings are made with fire protection systems, whether they're sprinkler systems or a restaurant, they'll have a hood system, manual pool stations, a number of different types of systems, fire protection systems in buildings. Currently, when the system's installed, and then after a period of time, typically one year, that system needs to be re-inspected by a fire contracting company, fire protection contracting company. They are required by code to submit those reports to us on, by, right now, by paper. So in the mail, occasionally by email, it's a real scattered way of getting that information, and we have no way of knowing if this three-year-old building is being inspected every year as their systems may require. We just don't have the staff to keep up with that. So this, the new fire code that's been adopted, the 2018 International Fire Code, allows us to require electronic submission of inspection reports. So a company, Bryser, recognized a need in the marketplace and formed a company called the Compliance Engine that will contract with the fire protection companies to submit forms to them electronically on behalf of departments that sign up with Bryser or the Compliance Engine. So it's a much more streamlined method, we can pull reports from that information as it comes into Bryser. Really, they're creating a database of all the buildings within our jurisdiction and the fire protection systems within those buildings, and they are ensuring that the building owner is notified when those inspections are due. So then, the building owner will contact Associated Fire Protection, they'll come out, do the inspection, then submit the report to Bryser, we can pull that report then from Bryser. So we have a great idea, a much better idea of how well our buildings are protected as they've been designed.
Okay, I'll ask you specifically, well, will the $25 fee that is paid by the, by the third parties, the building owner, does that get passed on to anybody else?
In Bryser's experience, and they work with hundreds of departments across the country, they found that 60% of the companies, the fire protection companies, will pass that expense on to the building owner. 40% will absorb that cost into their already existing inspection fees. So it really depends on how that company wants to proceed with the fee.
Any other questions?
Since we're on this particular subject, two things. First of all, I think support we point out that city ordinance requires we do this, first of all. And secondly, the fee that came out of the committee was literally about half the cost that they are in this area, other people that use it. We decided to have reduced cost simply because we have some idea of what it will cost to implement on our end of the process, but we really, without having a good year under our belt, really don't know what cost there might be. We felt half the cost of neighboring cities would be most reasonable the first year, and then we could adjust it after that. I thought that was important, as part of that discussion. Mr. Mungard?
Well, okay, I got a couple of the questions that have been posed to me. So there's information that about the, information about the building is provided to this third-party contractor. Do they sell anything? Do they sell that information or otherwise use that information to get any revenue?
No, they don't. They create that database for our purposes, they don't do anything with the information.
How do we control that?
By contract with them. Them being Bryser, the parent company.
Well, okay, then they are, to some extent, centralizing and storing information about a building in their database. Well, does the, in your view, does the benefit of the program outweigh any potential risk, if there is some, that this information will be lost in a breach or otherwise?
Bryser, in their contract, ensures us that they take all necessary precautions, as I'm sure most every company does whenever they have an internet-based system, so the security is present. Can that security be breached? Sure, it can. One of the nice things about the information they gather, when I first saw the question, and this will age me a little bit, but my first thought was, there's really not much more information that they will gather for us than is available on the Yellow Pages, and then I realized that there's no such thing as Yellow Pages anymore. So they gather building name, address, contact name, phone number of the, of the business, and then the fire protection systems within that business. So if somebody wanted that information, that's publicly available one way or another, so there's really no danger of any personal information certainly being lost, and there's, it's just all the business entity.
As I understand the question, Mr. Ingberg's discussion, this is a process that is used by neighboring cities?
Right. Omaha is, or on the verge of, we're right about the same pace as they are. Norfolk and Scottsfluff are the only, the other two Nebraska communities that are using it.
Okay, I have no further questions for you.
I've got, I've got some follow-up, if I could.
Councilman Stube, or Sunday? I'll get you right.
Thank you. So something Councilman Ingberg said, Ingberg said caught my attention. He said, "We're required to do this anyway." I just want to clarify that. We're required to monitor the fire safety systems. We're not required to use Bryser LLC and their database, are we? Right? So historically, we've done it another way. Is that right? Okay, so I have two questions then. What does this cost? And what did it cost us to do it the other way?
So can I take the last part of that?
Sure, sure.
The cost, the old-fashioned way, we'll say, is in manpower. Do we have the manpower? Historically, we've not had the manpower to go out and look at those buildings to make sure they've been inspected, or to contact the building owner and say, "Hey, your sprinkler system's coming due." So there's, the cost, we have, there hasn't been a cost of doing it in the past, other than, we don't know how protected those buildings are, those systems are being maintained. On the first part of the question, Bryser charges the fire protection company contractor $15 to submit an electronic report. We don't get any of that, that's just Bryser's cost. The FNA committee decided to make that cost $25, so we will get, we, the City of Papillion will get that $10 minus the processing fee back to us. A neighboring community is going to charge $40 for that fee, and that's the reference that Councilman Ingberg made, where we're less than half of that. It's completely up to each community whether they want to charge more than $15 or not. No right or wrong, it's just the feel for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Council?
No.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any additional proponents? Any opponents?
Matt Perry, 803 North Beetle Slough, was the guy who sent the email in today, so thank you, Chief, for answering those questions. I, I don't, I guess I wouldn't say I'm necessarily an opponent to it, but the questions that you asked were what I had sent in, and there's still things that I do find concerning. I think owning a business, especially one that has to have a fire sprinkler system in it, I mean, anybody who's had, you know, who's worked in a building like that, or, you know, churches or things along those lines, nobody enjoys that inspection process and finding out what it is that maybe they have to do, you know, differently. I think sticking any kind of a fee that's going to, again, even if it's only a $25 fee, I think just on principle, asking that of the business owner, especially when, from how I read the terms and conditions, like the chief said, they're charging the inspectors, the third-party inspectors, $15, and then the city receives, or, you know, they take, I think, a six and a half percent or something along those lines for the, for the processing. So there's a fee, while it may, you know, be nominal, again, I think it's more of a principle issue, burdening the business owner with, with something, saddling them with something that's not a necessity. The, the protection of, of information to, while it may not be specifically personally identifiable information that's being stored in the database, is it is information, it is data, and data's always worth something, and somebody's always willing to pay for data. So I think the other side of that is that the people who are being placed in this database did not volunteer to be placed in this database. This isn't something they said, "Yeah, I want my information to be stored here," even again, if it is just my name and that I work at this building, or my name and that I own this business. While that information might be publicly available, having it all in one central database, again, makes it valuable. So again, without the individual, and I'm sure at some point they are probably consenting to it as they're consenting to an inspection, but I, again, I think that that's something that, without the individual having decided for themselves, it's being decided for them that their information's going to be put into that. I think as a governing body, I think there has to be some care taken with, with, when we mandate that, or when you guys, when I say we, when you guys, when you guys mandate that somebody's information be collected in the database, I think there should be some pause, at least, you know, given to that. So there is an air of risk, obviously, with centralized information, and so, again, I, I understand that it, it makes sense for expediency's sake, and maybe, maybe the system, the current system as it is, is broken and antiquated, but I don't know that, that going this route is automatically the best thing. So I was just asking for those clarifications, and then maybe for there just to be a pause to think about what are the ramifications for this. I guess the final thing on that would be, you know, who's, who makes IT-based decisions for Papillion? I know we don't have an IT, you know, we don't have IT personnel per se, I think there's some kind of shared agreement with Sarpy County or something like that, but, you know, if there is somebody for you guys to be, you know, reaching out to, talking to about things like this, especially when it is a mandated, this person's information is going to be collected and placed in the central database, you know, if there are individuals for you guys to be talking to, discussing that kind of stuff with, I think it would be wise to do, and not just follow along again with what, you know, cities like Omaha are doing. So, thanks.
Any additional opponents?
Michael Tiedemann, 1001 Somerset Drive. I guess I'm not really an opponent either, but, you know, we talked about the $15 fee. I've been in the mechanical contracting business for well over 10 years. I can guarantee you, you tell me I have to pay you 15, my customer's going to pay 45, you know? So I think it'd be, the best way to keep that price low is if the fee actually got charged directly to the business owner and not go through the contractor. Thank you.
Any additional opponents? Council discussion? Councilman Stube?
Thank you. Mr. Mungard, Chief Bowes, would you come back up here? So I plan to support this. I think it's, it's important to, when there's a requirement for a building, to follow a certain code, which is the International Fire Code, is that correct? I think it's beneficial to the public to have some assurance that that, that building owner is maintaining their, whatever type of system they have in place, correct? So can, can you talk a little bit about, with regard to some of the information that's gathered? Because I, I get the impression that there's a lot of information that's gathered by this country, company, but I believe it's, it's pretty limited to, do they have a fire sprinkler system? Do they have a pool device? Do they have fire sprinklers? Do they have fire extinguishers? Can you talk a little bit about that information that's actually, when the contractor goes in and inspects, what is he actually looking for, and what data does he actually recover and report back?
Okay, good, good. Bill, Fire Chief, if we can take San Pierre Field in, the hotel here in town, when that building was built, it was built under certain requirements to have certain fire protection systems within it. Sprinkler system, manual pole stations, fire extinguishers have to be accessible, exit doors have to be available with the correct hardware, so there are any number of fire protection systems within there. The building owner has the responsibility to maintain those systems over a period of time. When the public goes into that building, there's an expectation of safety. If I see a sprinkler head up in the ceiling, I expect that that sprinkler head's going to work if there's a fire in the room. So the owner is responsible for that, the fire department has some responsibility within that as well, that would be argued by attorneys endlessly, probably, as to what extent we need all the responsibility to make sure that system works. That question's never really answered. So the building owner can let a system slide and not get it re-inspected at all. We may catch that at some point, we may not, there may be some unfortunate incident that happens at that building, and then afterwards, we find out the sprinkler system wasn't operational for some reason, hadn't been inspected in five years. So the building owner will contract with the Consolidated Fire or Associated Fire Protection to come in and do the yearly, generally yearly inspections to make sure the systems are up to speed. The, the information that the contractor gathers from the building owner will be the building name, owner, or contact person, generally a manager, phone number, address, and then anything specific to that system. It's a fire sprinkler system, it was installed in this year, it was inspected yearly on or about these dates. So that's about the extent of the information that they're gathering. If there's a fault, a problem with any system, then the contractor reports that fault to us through Bryser, through the electronic submission, so that we can follow up with it. In a, in a perfect world... In a, in a perfect world, the building owner will tell the contractor, oh yeah, that needs to be fixed, go ahead and do that. They submit a report saying it's been repaired, and we're good. If, one of the things Bryser will track for us is if that repair goes uncorrected for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, they will notify us of that, so that we can contact the building owner and say, hey, you really need to get this fixed, and put a little pressure on them that way.
I, I guess I, I've got two, I'll, I'll respond my thoughts to a couple of questions that were raised. First off, if we didn't do this with the contractor, we would then need to do it through the fire department, and wouldn't you include that information in a database?
Yes, we would. We have a records management system that we would put it in.
You know, so, so clearly, right, you know, it's reasonable to think that if it's in a database, it could be breached, it could be out there, and bad things could happen to it. It appears that risk would be there if we did it ourselves, or if we have this contractor, correct?
Correct. From, from a non-techy standpoint, yes, I would say so.
Okay, thank you, I have nothing. I'll, I'll just say with, I mean, the question about the fee is a legitimate question, and I'll, I'll answer how I've answered that question in my mind. And, and I look at that as the balance, and the question that I would ask is, well, okay, clearly there's a cost in doing, going through this process of making sure that these inspections are done and the, you know, that it's, that, that they, the system is kept up, operable, there's a cost involved. And so I ask, well, who should pay the cost of the effort to keep the people in that building safe by making sure that the system works? Should that cost be paid for by the person who owns that building, who rents it, who uses it, who otherwise has a direct benefit from that? Or should that cost be paid for by the taxpayers? People who will never set foot in that building, who will never have any benefit, achieve any benefit from that sprinkler system? So I've answered it to say, no, I don't want the taxpayers to pay that cost, I want that building owner to pay that cost, because that's the person getting the benefit. Am I correct?
Good point, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further council discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungard.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Clu.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Okay, the next, I think I missed something. Approval of amendments from May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, City Council meeting? Have I done that? All right. Let me find my place. Okay, we'll have ordinances for first reading, and there are none. Ordinances for second reading and public hearing, and there are none. So we'll go to ordinances for third reading and resolutions. The first item will be F one, resolution R twenty-one dash oh one oh three, a resolution to rescind resolution R twenty dash oh one hundred, and implement new policies concerning COVID nineteen related to activities, related to sports and other recreational activities. We're to have a motion to approve resolution R twenty-one dash one oh three. Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Clu. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? I would just simply ask, whoop, come forward.
That was a big sign, but that wasn't often. Matt Perry, eight oh three North Beetle Street. I, I guess I, some of this is probably just my, my lack of understanding of like, of procedures and things like that. So resolutions, I'm assuming from what I understand, they don't have to go through the typical first and second readings at my, right? Okay. So on first glance, I mean, I'm glad to see the recension of any ordinance, like that, that makes me happy, but th- this resolution then goes kind of to tack on some additional things, and, and I guess I just had some questions about that. Kind of at the bottom of the, of the resolution, it says additionally directed health measures published by any state, county, or local health authority shall be posted in a visible place at city-owned fields, courts, grounds, or other facilities, and shall be complied with by all participants and spectators at any game, practice, or other recreational activity. The city may deny entrance to its playing or practice fields, courts, grounds, or and/or other facilities to any non-complying participant or spectator, or require a non-complying participant or spectator to leave a city-owned premise, premises at any time. So I guess I'm looking for some direction, and, and this may be a question for the attorneys, but if we, I'm, I guess I'm looking for a definition of directed health measures, is that generally the same thing as, or are, is, you see it used interchangeably a lot with, with guidelines? I would hate to see guidelines being posted up and then being enforced by law enforcement if somebody decides they don't want to go along with, with a guideline. So I guess I'm looking for some, some clarification on that. During the, the, I guess our one-week mask mandate that we had, e- even in that, there, there, you, it was stated specifically that city buildings and city property was, was, was off limits, like, I, I could walk into City Hall without a mask on, even during the mask mandate, because it would become an issue if you guys, you know, the city would be denying me service it, uh, otherwise. So I'm, I'm curious why there's that flip for, for, for this resolution, why that's not being factored in, or, or doesn't seem to be being considered in this. I, I also don't understand why the, all this extra additional information is in here when the resolution itself, under fiscal impact, states the likelihood of the city being held liable for an exposure to COVID nineteen while on a city-owned facility is nominal. So if the risk is nominal, wh- why include the rest of this stuff in this ordinance? Why not rescind the, the prior ordinance and leave the rest of this stuff out? It, when I see things like this, it starts to feel a little, I don't want to say underhanded, but, but again, when you, when you, when you, when you say, hey, we're rescinding this thing, but we're tacking on all this extra stuff, it, and specifically with this, it feels like, it, it feels like the council are kind of passing the buck to unelected bureaucrats, to people in health departments, you know, DHHS, or, or Sarpy, the Cast, Sarpy Cast Health Department, or CDC, or, or things along those lines, to, so you guys can kind of say, it's not us, look, we just posted this guideline, it, it's not us, we, we don't have anything to do with it. I, I would much rather you guys pass ordinances, because I, we can hold your feet to the fire, if you guys pass things that, that the citizenry disagrees with, when, when it's simply a defaulting to unelected individuals, I, which is what this appears to be, it feels like a shirking of responsibility, frankly, on your guys' part. So yeah, I mean, I, I guess that's it. I, I, I just, I, I take issue with, 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 with some of the, with some of those points in there. It, it, if, 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 again, the resolution itself states that the, the, the risk is nominal, why have this stuff in here? Why make an issue out of a, out of a non-issue? Thanks.
Okay, fair enough. I would ask, since this is, all right, I guess I'm getting ahead. Any additional opponents? Okay, council discussion? Mr. Ingberg?
Mr. Perry, to, to your one comment about the, uh, passing the buck, so to speak, to the state county or local health, the reason I do like that part in there is because, as you all know, I'm not a physician, and, thank goodness, but we have to rely to a great extent on, on their expertise. Doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but we do have to have some means to follow the science. Now, during this COVID, the science has been all over the place, as you all know, and we have to ultimately still make a judgment, but we have to rely on those agencies to help us come to that judgment as well, because just out of thin air, I don't know that anybody on this council is qualified to, uh, come up with a science that makes sense or is reliable, and that's our comment, I'll make to that, that's why. Judgment is still ours, but we need to rely on somebody to get to that point.
All right, hang on a second. I'll, I'll give my two cents worth. Again, y- you know, it's again a balance in my mind, that what this resolution says is when some organization or a person, or, you know, typically an organization rents our fields, the fields that are owned by the taxpayers, we assume they're doing that for some, again, some benefit to them. They're going to have a tournament, they're going to have a league, they're going to do something that benefits that organization. So when we tell that organization, well, okay, here's the balance, there is some risk there, there is something going on that people could get hurt, who should pay, who should shoulder that risk? Again, the organization that receives the benefit, or the taxpayers? You know, Joe Tax Bear at some house up the street, who has nothing to do with the organization. And I answer that, well, that's why we have the release and indemnification agreement, is that we make sure that the pe- that the risk is being shouldered by the same persons or same organization that gets the benefit. But then, we want to be responsible, so we go on and we say, okay, but we're going to make sure that we tell you what that risk is. We're going to make sure that we tell you about the directed health measures. We're not going to, you know, put the burden on you and then leave you out in the cold. And that's how I'm reading those, the resolution. But I will, Mr. Perry, I will ask you, does that make sense to you? You want to come forward?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, I, I understand the city wanting to make sure, I mean, we live in a litigious society, you know, we want to make sure that, that the city's covered, the ta- I pay taxes, I don't want to pay out some, somebody legal fees, you know, because we got sued, or, or whatever. Mr. Ingberg, to your point, I, I understand what you're saying, we, you guys, you guys, you, you know, you, you gather the, you know, people around you who, who know things better than you, can't all be experts on everything, and nor should you be, but it, to me, it's the same principle why we don't, why the United States military doesn't have the power to declare war, right? Like, that's left to our elected officials. So this, to me, is, 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 is passing that off, saying, listen, we didn't make any rules on it, but we put these, we put these signs up based on things that, you know, smarter people than us told us, and so this is just what we're defaulting to, with, without there necessarily being an ordinance, other than this resolution saying what those guidelines say is law, right? Because, I mean, the city may deny entrance to its playing fields, the, the, require non-complying participant or spectator to leave city-owned premises at any time. So there, there isn't, there is a, an air of enforcement about this, right? I mean, if, if I, if I'm at a sporting event, let's, we'll use masks, and I say, I'm, I'm not going to wear a mask, I, I'm, I'm, we, we saw this, right? Like, there, there, there's, kind of stuff was all over social media, there was a, I think a woman in Texas who was, you know, twenty feet away from anybody else, her kid's football game, wouldn't wear a mask, and the, the footage is of a police officer wrestling her, you know, out, out of the bleachers. So again, there is an air of enforcement out of this, if you have somebody who says, I'm not going to comply with, with that guideline or that directed, uh, health measure at this sporting event. Again, you, you, you get into, it's going to be our police department who has to en- enforce this. I mean, I don't see city employees probably laying hands on, on citizens who refuse to, to comply with something like that. So it's, to me, it just gets into, it, I, I, whatever, I, I tend to be negative, so I go dark easily, but I, I, I just, I think like, things like this, it just like, I always look at the slippery slope, like, what does this look like? What does it look like when, when there's a health measure that's passed that is more onerous than what we saw with the mask mandates? You know? Now the city's in a position of like, whoop, we put up the signs, now our police officer's going to enforce it, and, you know, I just think, l- looking down the road, what, 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 what could this, what could this end up looking like? Having people sign waivers, I, I guess I don't care, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, that's a bigger societal issue than it is anything else, so I understand the city's need to protect itself in that way, but, but again, the, we're giving, you know, city autho- city employees the authority to, to remove people who won't comply with something that, that's a guideline or directed health measure, you know, again, you just, you get into some funny areas, as we've seen this past year, when you're talking people's health, and...
You know, and, and I'll, I'll give you my response to that, that certainly, if we say there are rules that need to be followed, and then say we're going to enforce it, there's the possibility that there will be improper enforcement. People are human, it happens. But then, on the other hand, if we say, look, folks, there are rules in using our facility, if those rules are put in place to try to keep people safe, and if you don't follow those rules, you're leaving people, possibly making people unsafe, but we're not going to enforce it, well then there's no point in imposing the rules. So yeah, I think we have to say, we're going to enforce the rules, folks. Now, I hope that every city employee understands that those, that enforcement is supposed to be done in a proper, you know, good reason, good wisdom way. So I, I could not go along with taking out the rules, I could not go along with saying we're not going to enforce the rules, because, yeah, if we're going to have rules, we're better enforce it.
I can just say that it's not you guys, in this, in this scenario, it's not you guys creating the rules, it's you guys allowing somebody else to dictate the rules for, for, for our facilities. And they are our facilities, right? Like, it's...
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's the nature of being a, you know, a governing body that is subject to the state of Nebraska, and...
And I, and I understand, but I, I hope, I mean, I don't, I know this is supposed to be back and forth, but I just, again, that, that, that's my concern, it's, it's, it's allowing other entities make decisions about rules for our facilities, that then our police officers will, will, again, when you take it all the way down the line, that's what it's always enforceable by, right, is by police action, so that's it. Thank you.
One, one last thing, Mr. Perry. Thank you for taking the time to express your concerns and everything, and it's going to sound like I'm splitting hairs, but seriously, your concern about us enforcing others' rules and so forth, as Council President Mungard said, i- is, is well taken. One thing that does, even though we're under the control of the state in many ways, one thing I think the city, one word to sit here, gives us a little bit of leeway in that section you're concerned about, is what it says, the city may deny use. It doesn't say we will, it says we may. So to me, that gives us a little bit of discretion as well, if that makes you feel any better.
Any further council discussion? Councilman Sunday?
I'm going to take that a step further. I, I think it says lawfully enacted in that last sentence, uh, by local or state health authority. It, it very well may require the way that's written for us to adopt it, you know, from CDC or whoever. However, I just want to make a, a, a point about the so-called experts, people that are very hyper-political that are so-called experts, such as Dr. Fauci, who's told us at the very beginning that we don't need a mask, and then he said we need a mask, and then he see, said we needed two masks. So that's a net gain of three masks. That man has no credibility with me, he might have with others here on this board, but he doesn't with me, because he's hyper-political and he's a liar. That's my firm belief about Dr. Fauci. And this whole thing has been a waste of effort and fear, because we've told people you have to wear a mask, and yet the states and communities that didn't have to wear a mask had no greater or less growth in the virus than people who did. So clearly the masks didn't work, they were a waste. I think other measures worked, like distancing, and not being in a closed room with somebody who might be at risk, certainly those types of precautions, but simply making our children and others wear masks was a waste of time, in my view. So I don't, and I respect your opinion, Steve, but I don't hold the so-called experts in the same high esteem that others on this board do, because I think we've been misled by them too many times. That, that's all I have, and I am going to vote for this tonight.
Any further council discussion? If not, then I'll call for the vote.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mungard.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Jaworski.
Yes.
Clu.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
Eight A's, zero N's.
Next item is item F two, resolution R twenty-one dash one. Next item is item F2, Resolution R21-10109, a resolution to adopt a language access plan for persons with limited English proficiency. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-0109? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, seconded by Councilman Clu. Proponents? Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Council discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Sunday? Mungard? Gaines? Glover? Jaworski? Clu? Stube? Engberg? Eight A's, zero N's?
Okay, the next item is item F3, Resolution R21-0110, a resolution to establish the 2020, 2021 salary ranges for management in exempt positions, and to include the public services manager position in the management exempt compensation program. Motion to approve, is there a motion to approve Resolution R21-0110? Motion by Councilman Clu, seconded by Councilman Stube. Are there any proponents? Yeah, I would, I would ask that Ms. Swenson, our human, somebody come forward to explain what we're doing here.
Carrie Swenson, HR Director for City of Papillion.
What are we, why are we making this position management exempt?
This position is, actually was, before the person vacated it, was overseeing a large number of part-time staff, which equated to full-time employees. So it made sense to, this person was part of their evaluation process, making decisions about the, what was happening within that person's part of the department. So it just made sense to make that person management exempt, since they were overseeing so many people.
So we're just moving them from an hourly person to a salaried person?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further. Any additional council discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Sunday? Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines? Glover? Jaworski? Clu? Stube? Engberg? Eight A's, zero N's?
All right, the next item is administrative reports. I don't believe any committees have met to give reports. So we'll go for comments from the floor? Seeing none. Are there any comments from Mayor and Council? At this time, the mayor would go on at length about many different things, but I will not. Let's see. I think that we have an upcoming council meeting Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. There's no closed session or any other items. So I will call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Glover, seconded by Councilman Gaines. All those in favor, let's call for the vote.
Sunday? Mungard?
Yes.
Gaines? Glover? Jaworski? Clu? Stube? Engberg? Eight A's, zero N's?
And council, we are adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.